Welcome to the July Board Meeting. This is... Meeting is being recorded and live streaming from the AMSA Facebook page. First step is to announce... For Sarah to announce the board members in attendance for our virtual meeting.
Bella Gorman. Should I just announce them? Okay, Bella Gorman, Ben Hamill, Jill Schaefer, Liz Saul, Maura Webster, Nick Poirier, Raul Porres, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, and Zachary Olgusby. And if there's anyone there that I didn't call, it's because I only see a phone.
Is either of those phone numbers we're currently missing Kristen? Who is listed as not in attendance right now?
Don Capello, Kristen Carney, and Salmini.
Sam Path. I saw...I thought I saw Salmini on my scroll. Okay, no, maybe I'm imagining things. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. So first, next step is to appoint a timekeeper to keep us on schedule. Who would like to volunteer to keep me on schedule here?
I'm gonna little add because Jess is not here to take it out for me.
And I do see that Kristen has joined us.
One of these days, I will volunteer Raul to be timekeeper. Tonight is just not that night.
I agree with you volunteering for next month. All right.
You did say this was gonna be a short meeting, right? So we'll keep it that way.
All right. We will not be having an executive session tonight because we have no executive session topic. All the announcements are great news and things that we can discuss in open session. So we have recorded our attendance and guests. Next step is public comment.
Salmini just arrived. Salmini just arrived.
So Liz, any public comment?
I did not. I just checked and I did not have any requests for public comment unless there's someone on the phone on the call tonight.
Anybody on the call wish to speak in public comment section? Hearing none. Okay, votes. So we are into the vote section of the meeting. Basically, we've got a series of three minutes, an annual report, and an update to the student handbook. So I'd like to start with any discussion on the meeting minutes from the 24th of June.
Roger, any question on order? Could we bundle them in one vote?
Unfortunately, no.
Not the way it's set up in Board on Track.
Okay.
When we get to the consent agenda, we would be able to do so.
Okay.
But at the moment, until we implement a consent agenda, we have to do the roll call on an individual basis.
Okay.
Good question. Hearing no questions on the 24th June minutes, I'll take a motion to approve.
We move.
Second.
Second, Raul and Maura.
Yep.
Sarah, call the roll, please.
I will. Okay. Oh, absent. Okay. Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Ben Hamill.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Nick Poirier.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Salmini Sam Path.
So I missed that meeting and I assume so mine would be an abstain.
Okay. And Zachary Olgusby?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Motion passes unanimously with one extension. Vote. Next up is the 30th June minutes. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll take a motion to approve the 30 June minutes.
Motion to approve the June 30th meeting minutes.
I second it.
Okay, Liz and Ben.
Liz, Ben. Sarah, call the roll, please.
I will. Ben, okay. Bella Gorman. Ben Hamill.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Nick Poirier.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Salmini Sam Path.
Yes.
Zachary Olgusby.
Yes.
Oh, it's done.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up is the 14 July minutes.
We had a question for Nick on that one, Roger.
Go ahead. Nick, there is a question. Did you attend the July 14th meeting?
That was the special meeting, right?
Yes.
I think what happened was I didn't attend the meeting because I was waiting in executive session.
Okay.
So technically, no, but I was in executive session.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Take a motion to approve the 14 July minutes.
Motion to approve the July 14th minutes.
Second it.
Liz. Sarah, call the roll, please.
Okay. Get my names out here. Okay. Bella Gorman.
I was not present. I guess I would abstain.
Okay. Ben Hamill.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Um, abstain.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay. Nick Poirier.
I guess I would have to abstain because I technically wasn't in that one, right?
You were in the executive session, so I think.
Either vote is fine.
So I'll say yes, then. I'll hold my abstain for when I really abstain. Yes.
Okay. Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Salmini Sam Path.
Abstain.
And Zachary Olgusby.
Yes.
Motion passes with extensions. Next up is the annual report. But I'd like to pass the baton to either one of Ellen or Sarah to give an overview.
I think that's Ms. Sarah. She is our annual report expert. Anything, Sarah, that you want to report that's out of the ordinary? Or maybe give an explanation for those people who are new?
All right. The annual report does serve as our way to show the Department of Education that we're making progress on our accountability plan. We're on a new one for this charter term. This is the first year of our charter term. And they use this as evidence when they go to renew our charter, which the process will begin in the third year of our term. So we are at the beginning. It was a very unusual year, but we had lots of wonderful highlights in there to give them. So I think it's a very good report this year. So I hope you had a chance to look over it. And Ellen has looked over it. And I think we've had a lot of people who weighed in on it, the department chairs. Padma Ja gave us a lot. Mark Vidal gave us a lot. And so it was a nice compilation. Many people were involved. And I think that right now Ellen has approved that. And so she's asking you, she's recommending that you approve it as well. So then that's the next step, and it's due tomorrow.
So this is...it's done by every charter school. The state realizes that charter schools were not able to meet all of these categories. You'll know that notices a lot of indication about noting COVID.
Any questions for Sarah or Ellen regarding the annual report?
No, but I think it looks fantastic, and thank you.
Yeah, for an odd year, it turned out pretty good.
It was a pleasure to help write that.
Take a motion to approve the annual report.
Motion to approve the annual report.
Yay, Sheila.
I second it.
Second from Ben. Sarah, call the roll, please.
My stuff, okay. Bella Gorman.
Approved.
Ben Hamill.
Yes, approved.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Kristen Carney.
Yes.
Liz Saul. Maura Webster.
Yes.
Nick Poirier.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Salmini Sam Path.
Yes.
And Zachary Olgusby.
Yes.
It's a motion pass.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up is the updates to the student handbook. That would be...is Mike Demrocki present or Sarah to discuss? This has already been reviewed and approved by governance.
Correct.
Right. No, Mike is on vacation. And although I was at governance, I am not as involved in this part of the school as I used to be. Sheila, do you have the little summary there?
I don't have it in front of me, and I also was not at governance, unfortunately, this month.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I...yeah. Did one of you want me to pull it up and share? It would be awesome if you could, Salmini.
Yeah. Sarah, did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes. It was sent out, yes.
Yeah.
All right. There were just a few, a couple minor tweaks, I know, that as we're getting better and better at this and as, you know, our attorney has reviewed it last year, we only have to make little changes to it. Nothing big. Nothing for the uniform. There we go.
Perfect. Thank you, Salmini. So Salmini or Sarah, can you just summarize what's changed? Very briefly, since it's already been detailed, reviewed in detail in governance?
I will do my best. So I think in general, there's just some language changes over here that we reviewed to essentially talk about what counseling services are offered and, you know, some explanation around that. And then there was some clarification to the academic dishonesty infractions in the lower school. We went back and forth on this, and I think Mike has since clarified even more in the handbook. So we had at least one email exchange where he did clarify. Mainly, it was just bringing it in line with what we've already been, what has been in place for the school, is what I understand. And then the half-day dismissal time has changed from 11:33 to 11:07, which essentially means that we're using the time a little bit more clearly and giving a half-day as a more clear half-day so that professional development for teachers can happen then after that in a more timely way. So those are my understandings of the changes. Overall, there was a healthy discussion in governance, but Mike handled all our questions, and I feel very comfortable recommending this for approval. Sheila, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add the main change with the academic dishonesty infractions was a switch from an after-school detention as a first offense to a Saturday detention to make it more in line with the severity of the consequence.
Thank you, Jill, and sorry I missed that.
That's all.
I have nothing else. Thank you, Salmini.
Questions for the governance team? Hearing no questions, I'll take a motion to approve the updates to the student handbook.
So moved. A motion to approve the updates to the handbook.
I'll second it. That's what my job is tonight, I second everything.
Back and Ben. Sarah, call the roll, please.
Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Ben Hamill.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer.
Yes.
Kristen Carney. Liz Saul.
Yes.
Maura Webster.
Yes.
Nick Poirier.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Sheila Kelly.
Yes.
Salmini Sam Path.
Yes.
And Zachary Olgusby.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are through with the vote section. On to reports, starting with Ellen for the executive director report.
Well, I can say as I'm getting ready to share this that that is one change from the way it used to be, is that I would have known that by heart not that long ago. So getting better at delegating. All right. Let's see, we're gonna present this. Alrighty. So obviously, I am away. I'm coming to you live from Madison, New Hampshire, up in the wonderful White Mountains here, just outside of North Conway. Very nice to be away a little bit. All right. So welcome, everyone. I hope you're having a wonderful summer and that you're finding the end of July that you've been able to get a little rest yourselves and gotten away from things a little bit. So tonight, we have an abbreviated report. Let me talk a little bit about back to school. We don't have much information right now. Little bit more information on our Forest Street purchase. Then we're gonna talk a little bit about some clarification around the building and some feedback that we received on the parent survey. And I just want to get some information about the history of our building project out there one more time so that folks know the work that we've been doing over, Roger could say, probably the last 10 years, but for me, since 2017, 18. And also, just a reminder about the golf tournament. We can't forget that's coming up, August 10th. And I believe the last I looked that there were about a dozen golfing spots left. So a little bit of information. We haven't gotten any new guidance from the Department of Education this year. Very different from last year, where it was flowing freely. What we do know, and I'm sure that you've all seen on the news as well, is that the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both issued their new guidelines around masks. I haven't heard that much around distancing, but there's an awful lot of talk right now about what the fall should look like and what recommendations are gonna be. So we're gonna watch this very, very closely. I'm assuming that in the next one to two weeks, we will be getting more information from the Department of Education and the state of Massachusetts about what we need to do for the schools this fall. The last we heard was that there was gonna be no mask requirement for vaccinated folks, and there would be no distancing. I don't know that that's gonna be the case right now. So we're gonna wait on that. Hopefully, I know I've gotta have more information for you, buddy, by the August board meeting. But as soon as we find out more information, we'll get communication out to our families. I do want to make you aware, though, that there's gonna be some issues around the Marlboro busing this year. I know we've been in touch with Mike Bergeron and his team around transportation in the city of Marlboro. He will be talking to his school committee this month as well to, just to give you some initial information and let you know that there's a bus driver shortage. And this shortage is all over. We're seeing them everywhere we go. Everyone's trying to hire people. Well, the busing industry is no different. And so there's a significant shortage. We're monitoring this closely, but know that we might have to get a little creative in the year to come, at least initially. So now, just a little bit of an update on our Forest Street project. Now that we have a purchase and sales agreement signed as of July 26th, more of this information will be coming out at the board meetings because we won't need to discuss it under executive session. So we did sign that purchase and sales agreement. Very exciting day for all of us. I know Leanna and I were both passing back memes of doing happy dances, so we were very, very thrilled. And the plan is to pass papers on the property within 90 days. We're hoping it will be closer to 60, but we have everything in place for out as far as 90. We don't see any issues ahead of us. I was in a meeting last week. I was telling Raul and Roger about, just prior to this meeting, where all the players came together. Mass development, a couple folks from them, our attorney, their attorney, the bank's attorney, bank folks. And Bob did a great job pulling all of us together. Everybody's on pace. Everyone is doing what they need to do to have this, our papers ready to pass early fall. And for the school, right now, there's not a lot for us to do as far as getting us to the stage where we're passing papers. Everything is in other agencies' hands, and it seems that they are all on pace. So we're very excited about that. It was a very productive meeting. We're gonna get together every couple weeks to make sure that everything is still going smoothly. We've also applied to the Department of Education, which you know, because the mortgage is longer than our charter, we need to get an okay with them. That paperwork has all been submitted too. So we're in good shape there. Did want to introduce you here to our new OPM, so the owner's project manager. We are required by the state to have an owner's project manager. Introducing you to Ksenia Slavsky here. She is a senior project manager that I will be working most directly with. And she is part of Answer Advisory. I have the, I put their website on here in case anyone wants to look at the company a little bit more closely. But we went through a full application process, presentation, a group of us got together, and these are the folks that we hired. And I think we will see Ksenia quite a bit over the next couple of years. I was on a call with her and one of her partners, Margaret, today, and we had a great conversation. So we do want to get some information out about the history of our building projects. We did get a number of folks, parents, who made comment on the survey, the spring survey. You know, congratulations, happy about the building, but why didn't we ever look at any other buildings in Marlboro? And so, you know, I'm assuming that, you know, that may be coming from some of our newer families who maybe, you know, haven't been around to see the history of how this has moved along. I can speak from the time that I've been in leadership in school, which has been like four and a half years now. Roger's been around a lot longer than I have. But we have visited more buildings in Marlboro than I could, than I could probably name all of them. But we've visited many, many buildings, and we've researched even more buildings and had realtors, you know, help us seek out other buildings. We want to be in Marlboro, there's a number of reasons. And it's important, it's an important part of our charter and for the regulations under the Department of Education. But it also has a lot to do with our busing. So we're very committed to Marlboro and to staying in Marlboro. So that does limit things. But I think that I've walked through nearly every available building that might even be in our range, size range, in Marlboro. Also want to let people know that we came close on a number of properties. In fact, back in 2018, we had, well, we've had nearly purchased three other properties or been involved with deeply with three other properties since 2018. We have had a PNS on, well, the property that we have right now, but another property as well. We have, I've done a fit plan on three other properties since 2018. So there's been a lot of work and a lot of time that's gone into it. But each and every time, we get to a certain place, and it becomes very obvious that we just don't have the money to do it. And it has to do with the fact that you buy an office building, you have to, you know, gut the whole thing out, and you start from scratch, and you're putting in classrooms, and there's a tremendous amount of cost associated with that. The other issue is that when you purchase a property like that and you're building it out, you are building it out and paying a mortgage on that property, you're also paying rent on the property that you're in, so that the cost is double, and we've never been able to put enough money together to be able to afford all of that. So we may end, these other projects unfortunately have fallen through, and it led us back once again to our current property, which is something that we can fit out and work on while we're also occupying it. And I think we're gonna see that some work will get done while classes are in session, and, you know, we're gonna work around that. But we're not paying two properties. So in the end, lack of money prevented us from moving forward on those other properties. But we do want you to know that we have done our due diligence. We have looked at every property we could possibly find. As a charter school, we're not able to fund our building projects the way a traditional public school can, right? We can't go through mass building authority. We can't raise people's property taxes. We're really dependent on bank loans and fundraising and foundations and grants and things like that. So just want to reassure our families that we have put a tremendous amount of time and work over many years to find the right home for AMSA. I do believe that Forest Street is a great option for us. We've never been able to look at a building that will offer us as much square footage as Forest Street will offer us because we can build out the third and the fourth floor in the white building. And so that's a huge piece. There's been other properties that have been 100,000 square feet, but now we're gonna be able to, you know, expand even more and then build the gymnasium. I really do believe, after going through this since 2017, that this is our best option. And I do believe that the Board of Trustees would not move this project forward if they didn't believe that that was the case as well. But happy to talk about it if anybody wants to reach out. And then I'm just gonna end with just one more plug for our golf tournament. I can't wait to be there. Dr. Lewis and I will both be there for the day. In the evening, there's gonna be a dinner, and the two of us will be there. Be happy to talk and discuss the school and the building project and anything else people want to chat about. There's some more information there. You can also take a look at the, you can register at the link at the top. And then the link at the bottom is, that is for the silent auction. I will put a plug in for the fact that Dr. Lewis and I have an item that we're auctioning off in that silent auction. And the item is that you can bid and become part of our back-to-school video that we're gonna produce, Mr. Finkel. And so if you would like to bid on that, we already have three bidders. I think it's up to $40. And you would like to come and help collaborate, you can star in it, you can help us write it, you can help Mike Finkel edit it, whatever you'd like to do. Come and have some fun with Anders and I creating the back-to-school video, which we're kind of excited about. We're kind of hoping we may get a student or a parent or somebody who's been like, "Oh, those two bozos, they need some help," and get us off and rolling for the beginning of the school year. And then this is just a couple little pictures of, this is where I am. That's my little pond. That's my little beach area there outside my window. And we have these two lovely loons that I've been watching for about 15 years. They're the same couple because they mate for life, and they have babies for us every year. And that's just a picture I caught of them earlier this week. And that's all I have. Any questions on anything? Thank you. The rain is pounding here now.
All right. Well, thank you, Ellen. I would just echo the many years spent searching for buildings. We have explored most of Marlboro trying to find the solution. I think we found the best available fit.
Long and winding road.
Yes. Let's get to the finish line, and then we'll celebrate. All right. Hearing any other questions for Ellen? A faculty report, Zach.
Okay. This will be relatively short, as I did not get a lot of feedback over the summer. But real quick, I'm just gonna have to ask your apologies, as about two hours ago, I was stricken with hiccups. So forgive me for that. I've been trying to get rid of them for two hours. Overall feedback, the main thing I heard... Overall feedback, the main thing I heard a lot from is people just very thankful for the bone, very thankful for the bonus. Uh, surprised by how generous it was. Uh, one person says, what a gift to us after an unexplainably difficult year. The other thing that someone brought up that they wanted me to pass on is they heard some talk about exploring the music program that Education Committee was discussing. They personally, they're very supportive of that. To quote one section of what they say, "Music is an important part of a well-rounded education and teaches teamwork, collaboration, and the importance of practice more than any other subject." I'm glad to hear the school is exploring this topic again, and I hope it is more than just an exercise. So I wanted to pass that along as well. Beyond that, have not heard much as most people are still on vacation.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you, and thank you for your first uh faculty report. Bella. Parent representative report.
So I feel like the official transition has not happened between Maura and myself. So I have not heard anything and I've not reached out to the parent community. I guess I um probably should do that come September. Uh, I believe it happens at that first P T O meeting, but Maura, I don't know if you've heard um from any parents.
Um, it's been relatively quiet, which is usually the case this, for the July, the July meeting. Um, but we'll go through, I'll kind of give you like an email schedule and all that other kind of stuff. And so September you'll start hearing.
Especially with the buses.
Yeah.
And Bella, I feel like you can reach out to me anytime. If you have any questions, um, just, just poke me anytime.
That sounds great. Thanks.
Any, any items for board discussion from the uh executive director, parent report or faculty report? Hearing none, we'll go on to chair business. Uh, first I'd like to pass it on to Liz to talk about the teacher and staff year-end bonus.
Okay, so um I think as, as Zach just noted, um we did vote on, on June thirtieth to give a five percent bonus to the, to the faculty and staff of AMSA after this what has been a very crazy year. Um, in July, we also voted to give that same bonus to Ellen, um, which we think is, is well-deserved all around. Um, as a result, I just have a, a brief statement that I want to read um on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And really, this is going to the, the faculty, staff and administration from the Board of Trustees. Would like to convey to all of you our immense appreciation for everything that you have done since March of twenty twenty. Uh, when, if you all remember when we left that Wednesday on March eleventh, um, for the deep cleaning um on Thursday and Friday, no one could have ever imagined that we would physically be out of school for over a year. The work that occurred by the AMSA community to ensure that learning continued and that you were meeting the needs of the students during this extraordinary time in all our lives was nothing short of astounding. Last summer, when we were looking at what back to school would look like, you requested a set period of time till the end of the first term so that you and students wouldn't be bouncing between models in order to ensure academic consistency during remote learning. That set period of time ended up lasting until the end of April twenty twenty one. We trusted your judgment and all of you more than delivered on what you thought you could do. We hope that we will never repeat what has occurred during this past year and a half. But we can all be assured that the faculty, staff and administration of AMSA are more than equipped to handle whatever comes their way. Again, we can never thank you enough for all your efforts and the care and consideration you've shown all of us during the pandemic, especially to the students and families of AMSA. Thank you all.
Thank you all very, very much. That was very meaningful. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Liz. I think you, you captured the, the the whole spirit of the, the whole, the whole board has felt. So I, I have nothing, saying more would just be subtracting. Um, it was a fantastic year. We persevered. We made it. Um, and we're ready for, we're getting ready for next year. Uh, next up, uh, survey results, survey task force, Rowell.
Yep. Uh, I believe I'm able to share my screen, so I'm gonna do that. If you remember uh back in our last board meeting, hopefully I can keep myself on time. Uh, in the June board meeting, we just, or actually it was the May board meeting, we discussed the, the quantitative results from, from the survey. Uh, which are now public on the website, I believe. And um we offered that we will come back and summarize the comments. So just so everybody understands what we're doing, there's two surveys, there were two surveys in the spring, a family survey and the staff survey. They all had an opportunity to provide comments on all the questions. It is a tremendous task to go through more than nine hundred comments on the family side. And um I forget the number from the staff side, but, but proportionally similar to, you know, the, the number of people responding to the survey. So first of all, thanks to the survey task force that actually went through that. We do read your comments. And one of the things that we're trying to settle around, just to make sure you know what we do with those comments is tie them back to action. So what are we doing about the things that we see? And it's one of the things that we have talked about in the past. It's an evolution of discussions that I think the, the fact that we were talking about these things means that the school is in a healthy place. We have these conversations. So please keep them coming. So, you know, to everybody that responded, I want to thank you for your feedback. Uh, to all of us, feedback is a gift and we treat it as such. So let me, without further ado, get into our observations. And again, we're trying to summarize a thousand comments into a short conversation, but uh, but hopefully you'll get the point. Uh, one thing I forget if we talked about this when we talked about the numbers was the survey response rates. And we bring this up every time we do this. And just comparing the, the last couple of years with this year, it's kind of a similar response rate. From the staff, we get close to fifty percent of the, the, the staff responding to, to the survey. And in the families, about nineteen percent um is counted as number of families. And sometimes the survey goes to both parental units. So, you know, it's kind of hard to count, but again, that's a nineteen percent from the number of survey uh requests that go out. Part of this is, is, it's a trend that has continued over the years. One of the things that we question and, and we can open that up for discussion is whether we have too many surveys. So, and, and by that I mean, these are the board surveys. And there are surveys done by the administration, the teachers sometimes reach out directly, there's student surveys, there's so I think at some point we need to decide, is this too much? Is the survey too long? Because we do have definitely too many questions. And, and we need to decide uh how to cut that down to increase these response rates and to make it worthwhile for everybody's time. So I think if we had something shorter and instead of doing two, we did one survey a year, we wouldn't lose much as far as guidance of things we can change throughout the year. But if that means an improved response rate, it would be worth it. So I'll throw it out there. Uh, we can discuss in the site later and, you know, we're gonna have to convene a new survey task force for the new school year, but um we, we can discuss whether or not we want to do a fall and a spring surveys going, going forward. Uh, but we did agree in the task force that we do think we should have a board-run survey to differentiate from all, all the other surveys that are put together by the faculty and the staff. Um, only because we see that as a channel of feedback to the board directly from the families and the staff. So we think it's worth to keep those channels. I mean, it's not the only channel, but just to make the point that we, we thought it was worthwhile to have at least one. Overall observations, and you may, this is something similar we've done in the past, just to try to again summarize everything that we saw as big trends. I, I talked about the turnout, the turnout in general, but the turnout of the staff kind of matches the, the, the turnout from the elections. There was a comment made about, hey, this is kind of similar. We, everybody wanted, it was finally, you know, typically there is no contest for the faculty rep. On these elections, uh, we got three quarters of the staff, of the faculty, eligible faculty voting, uh, which you might argue that this is something that we should expect to be closer to a hundred percent. So it kind of sees that, you know, what does that mean as far as participation, right? So fifty percent of the staff is not participating on the survey and a quarter of the staff didn't participate in the elections. So we're just highlighting that. Uh, overall, there was high approval of administration, which is something that we will continue to celebrate, given our history and, you know, the things we come from. So thank you, Ellen, and, you know, all the staff for, for making sure that the climate is still there. And there were a lot of comments about mental health, depression, anxiety. By the way, the comments are, there are two sides to every argument, just like we've talked in the past, but everybody agrees that it's important to keep an eye on mental health and, and to make sure we do everything we can to address the safety of our students in every, every aspect. Uh, we, the timing, if you remember, when we talked about the timing of the survey, we waited and, and delayed it a little bit just to make sure we had captured people's feelings after coming back to school. And even though that was the case, there were a lot of comments about remote work and everything that happened during the remote learning time of COVID. We hope all of that is behind us. But however, like Ellen mentioned, uh, we're, we're waiting on guidance and see how things are gonna go for, for the new school year. But hopefully all of this is behind us. Uh, but we did take your, your input in mind as we consider further uh what, you know, what, what we're gonna do in the future. Uh, I mentioned this already, so you know, potential changes. We want to have one shorter annual board survey as opposed to having the two ones. And again, this is just to increase participation and make sure that, that uh that we don't over-survey the people. One thing that we try to do in the task force is also map the trends and the things we heard to things that are being done to address that. So just to be very clear, um, we are taking your input into account and this is reflected in a lot of things that you'll hear more about as we continue. And I think Ellen's gonna speak to some of these in, in our next board meeting. But just to highlight a couple of things, actually, one thing that I did do on purpose. If you remember the work that we've been doing around strategic planning and goal setting and, and so many, I, I have to call you out because you've done a tremendous job of boiling this down to things that we can refer to going forward. That last column here that talks about board goals refers to those six key goals that we highlighted. And they're basically all of them here about our, our focus areas as a board. So some of these trends are directly related to those goals, which to me is a validation that we're working on the right things, hopefully. So if you had any comments there and speaking to everybody that responded on the staff side about the, the cleavages or division between the middle and high school, uh, you'll hear more about the building bridges initiative that again Ellen's gonna provide more detail about. We got, we just got another available facility, so hopefully we can be more open now about how we're buying and, and building our campus. That's always been, as far as I've been on the board, a comment that has been made understandably so. Academic rigor is another thing. That's another cleavage that continues to be there. I think Dr. Lewis has a great plan that he's working on that we call the road ahead. Um, and then that's kind of related to the last one about emotional health balance and that with academics, which I think everybody understands, but most people understand it's not a zero-sum game and something that we can strive for. So that, that plan of AMSA twenty twenty five refers to all that. Um, I can't speak in detail about what that means, but I'm sure we will learn more about that coming up in the next, in the next uh month or so. On the family side, kind of similar trends. Um, we added a question about, do you understand what the board does? I think it's clear that nobody does what the board does. Uh, so we'll continue to do things like, you know, present the family forum and impart orientation and explain what our role is. There's actually a, a board job description that governance is working on and we will share as appropriate. And again, that's tied to one of our goals. Um, there were some interesting or maybe concerning comments about how politics is being brought into the classroom. Uh, one thing I would say as far as what can we do about it is that there is a communication process in place. And I think we've talked about this in, in governance at least, and how that happens to bring up those issues and make sure the department chairs know about it and, and deal with them accordingly. It's a case-by-case basis. And so as far as the board goes, that's, that's, you know, making sure that those policies are being respected is, is all we are doing right now. Uh, and you'll see similar comments to what we saw on the staff side about academic excellence and and consistency of teaching that have to do with those plans, the road ahead in the AMSA twenty twenty five. Uh, so again, um, I just wanted to highlight a few of the, the top trends there. Um, I did mention the survey. There were some comments about the survey being too long, so uh, that ties back to maybe an idea of changing the way we're doing things. So we'd love to hear the board's opinion on that. These are some of the key topics. I think it's good to highlight some of the positive things. I think it was Jess that mentioned that reading through these comments sometimes could be a soul-draining exercise. Because people are being honest and candid. We definitely want you to, to be that way in the comments. But sometimes that makes us feel, well, it's AMSA really that bad. And, and it's really, you know, it's, it's one way of looking at things. So we do want to highlight the positive. Uh, I'm not gonna read through this, but you guys can see that there is a lot of positive feelings about how good this school is and we should remind ourselves all the time of that, even as we are addressing our shortcomings. So AMSA has a great program and amazing features. I have not doubted that since I joined this board. And I'm sure I will continue to confirm that as I, as I become a closer member of the community. Uh, but it's great to hear these positive comments. Uh, also, we asked in the surveys, can you suggest something? You know, not just highlighting the challenges and the limitations, but what do you think can be done to improve things? And I gotta say, it's like we have to kind of dig deep to find those recommendations or, or suggestions. But when we do, we take note of them. So uh, somebody actually commented about the efficiency of the board meetings. And as you know, we've talked a lot about that. We do that. Uh, but somebody commented, can we have an agenda in advance? And you know, when we ask for comments and whatnot, have been prepared for that. I think that's something we've done all along, but as we start doing things like a consent agenda, whatnot, it will be more important to share that with the community. Um, there were some comments about activities. I think once we start going through the development of our facilities, we can continue to expand on the conversations we have had. But there were some comments here about co-ops with Marlborough and whatnot that could be considered. Um, there's specifics comments about uh curriculum and, and teaching that could be considered as well. And and I will refrain from having an opinion since I'm not a, a teacher, but, you know, focused on vocabulary in lower school and, and things like that. Um, communications is also a topic that comes up all the time and how parents want uh more clear channels and whatnot. And again, there's some specific suggestions here that, that we took note of. There is a, in general, and then I'll put this as other because there's many, many topics. As you might imagine with nine hundred comments, there's a lot of things, a lot of suggestions, but there's, you know, there's a lot of comments about having more social events and creating more climate and cultural ways of, of uh seeing each other outside of the classroom. I, I'm sure this was in everybody's minds in a year that, that we were all remote, but uh hopefully going forward, we can increase some of that as well. Concerns, which like I said, you know, sometimes it's tough to read these, but it's important to acknowledge them and, and receive them. The, the, uh, I, this is hard to address because it's, it goes back to one of our big cleavages around academic excellence, but using, um, having the teachers understand whether a, a student needs specific uh treatment or specific need has to do with them changing their teaching style versus dealing with a student that's just not prepared to take on the rigor of AMSA. That I'm not gonna get into what the right answer is, but I think it's important to know that it's not a zero-sum game. So again, we saw comments that we've seen throughout the years about what is the responsibility of the teacher versus what is the responsibility of the student and the community to make sure we are providing that rigor to all and we're not, and we're being consistent with teaching. There's no, there's no silver bullet for this, but I do want to acknowledge that that's something that keeps coming up. And the bottom one is, um, I, again, this was just an example of the comment I made earlier about political beliefs being shared in the classroom. I think um this captures kind of the, the, the source of these concerns, which is that we need to make sure that we're encouraging everybody to have discussion and, and to have a settled discourse without necessarily imprinting our political biases into the classroom. And I think we've done this in the past. Uh, for every issue, there are comments on both sides of the coin. So um there was a lot of opinions about how well COVID was managed within the school and the policies that we, that we enacted and and the guidelines. I think Ellen said this, but I, it's worth repeating. We only have so much uh room to work with when we have to follow guidance that comes from the state and all the authorities. So I, I think people sometimes in the comments feel that there were a lot of decisions that were made by the school when they were actually following, following guidelines. So I think some people understood that and then said, you know, administration did as good as possible as we could from dealing with the pandemic. But some people felt that was a failure and that we should have done things differently. But again, the devil's in the details when you understand the room that we have for actually doing things outside of the guidelines that were provided. the room that we have for actually doing things outside of the guidelines that were provided. And then my last comment, I think in, in the past, we've, we've had this conversation, you know, um, it seems that we are very divided in a lot of issues, but at the end of the day, when you start getting into the details, you realize that we really are not. We all want the same thing and we might be disagreeing on the approach on how these things are done. So again, I'm picking on one thing that comes up over and over, which is academic rigor versus emotional balancing of emotional needs. Uh, I don't think all these comments here are conflicting. You know, we do need to provide academic rigor. We do need to make sure that, that emotional needs are being met and they're adequate with the academic standards that we have for the school. We want to make sure the classroom environment inspires, engages and empowers students to maintain a healthy balance. And that's all part of what, what, uh, we are tasked to do. That's our mission. That's the charter. So, um, I think it's important to know that all these different perspectives actually are not that different. We, they're not conflicting. And again, I will continue to remem- remind everybody of that because, uh, there's more commonality in these diverging comments than you might think. Once you get to the bottom of it, we all want the same thing for our kids. Um, so I'll leave it at that because I think I'm actually like three or four minutes left. Or, or, or over. Any, uh, anybody from the task force that, uh, would like to, um, add anything to to the comments that we read, the presentations? All right. That's the case, Roger. I'll turn it back to you.
Board members, any comments or questions for the survey task force?
That was a really excellent summary. Thank you very much. Uh, and thank you. Yeah. And thank you for tying it back to our vision statements. Uh, I appreciate that. I think that's something we want to continue to do as well. Thanks for that as well.
Thanks, Samini. And thanks for all the work you did to, to make it easy to tie it back to our vision and, and again, it is also to show that we are focusing on the things that everybody's concerned about.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Um, we will need to reconvene a new survey task force. I should probably put that into the August or September meeting so to prepare to make the decisions on what frequency and length of the, uh, the upcoming surveys.
It's great fun. I would encourage other board members to try it out.
It, it's, it, it is actually, there's a lot of interesting things that are, that I've been on survey task forces in the past and it is quite valuable and very insightful. You'll learn a lot about the depth of the school. So I would encourage board members to do it. I will put it on, I will put that on the September board meeting as for recruiting for this, the, the upcoming survey task force. So if you're interested, please reach out to me. And next up, uh, chair business, I have the ED evaluation task force update. Liz.
Yep. Uh, so we have started, um, the evaluation, um, Ellen's annual evaluation process. Uh, you all should have received an email, um, requesting your feedback, um, to complete the survey. Uh, just as a, um, important point, um, Zach and Bella, you will not receive it because this is for this past year. So just FYI, I did not include you um, because it's, it's backward looking and not forward looking. Um, but we have started to receive feedback, um, especially from Ellen's direct reports. I think I can safely say that not one member of the board has responded yet. So I'll, uh, including myself, so we can all take that as a to do. Um, the plan was to have them, uh, done by August 2nd. Given that this period is a big vacation time, I'm, uh, contemplating just moving that out maybe a week um, to give people a little extra time to, uh, to reply. Cause I want to make sure that we have a, a full complement of feedback before we, we complete the process. Any questions?
So you're, so Liz, you're saying to, uh, deadline to complete it by?
I'm looking at August 7th.
August 7th? And it's important that we get this in because this blocks, until we, until we get the board feedback, we can't move onward to the next, to the next step. So, board members, uh, please, uh, complete, complete your evaluation. If you have questions, reach out to Liz or myself. All right. Uh, final piece of chair business, just to, um, announce that we will be having a finance committee meeting this next Monday to discuss uh, the, basically we're, we've already have a, this is related to the building. Sorry, I'll, I'll take a step back. Um, so in the purchase of the building, we, the finance committee is going to be meeting to discuss whether or how to, and how to enter into a rate lock to lock in the interest rate that we'd be paying to purchase the building. And we will be discussing that in detail and making a decision in the finance committee meeting on Monday. So that's, that is it for chair business. Any questions for me? Okay. Onto committee reports, governance.
All right, Roger. Maybe this is not a question, but only because I'm looking at the agenda. Uh, did you mean to say something about the calendar or is that, or just for reference?
Oh, yeah. I, and yes. So the board meetings for the year have been posted on the AMSA calendar. So, so anybody, you know, add, add them to your personal calendars. And obviously they are subject to change as needed. So thank you for your reminder. Other questions for the chair? Onward to committee reports. Sheila.
So unfortunately I had to at the last minute miss the governance committee meeting this month, but the committee did meet. Um, we went over, they went over, I should say, the, um, changes to the handbook that you all just approved. Um, we continue to work on, uh, Samini's, uh, strategic goals and Raul has put a lot of work in on a, um, job description for uh, the prospective board trustees. Unfortunately I have been negligent in not meeting with Kristen yet to talk a little bit more about board recruitment. But that along with the meeting efficiency, um, objectives are still being discussed and worked on. So more to come on those.
Any updates on when, on the consent agenda and steps we need to?
Um, I hope to have something to, in the next couple of weeks on that. I just, I have, to be frank, I haven't had the time to put into it that I need to.
All right. Look forward to it. Questions for governance? Next up, uh, finance, Kristen. And Leanna.
All right. Hi, everyone. Working on getting this set up here to share. Now I'm, I'm in Zoom, so I have to remember how to share in Zoom.
In the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, it's not showing the screen. Here it is. Okay.
For me, there's a green arrow on the bottom of the screen.
I've got it. No, and you can see it. Thumbs up. Excellent. All right. So, uh, this month we're going to look at total year preliminary numbers and results. Um, Leanna is working on the audit and once the audit is done, we will present, uh, in the September, I believe, September or October meeting, whenever that's completed, uh, the final, um, financials for the full year as well as the report that compares how AMSA does to the other charter schools, uh, that our audit firm works on. So that's always fascinating. So I hope everybody will join for that one. So this year in the 20 to 20, 21 school year, final tuition, which was received, uh, right at the end of June, came in 3% greater than our original plan or $449,000 above plan. Um, this is, you know, very good for the school, obviously. And total revenue netted 1% over the budget. So there was some decreases primarily associated with COVID and we'll go into detail about that, uh, shortly. Total expenses came in 4% below plan or a total of $590,000. And expenses did include the one-time bonus of 5% to the AMSA faculty and admin that was discussed earlier. And also significant savings throughout the P and L due to remote learning during the majority of the year. So overall for the year, the total surplus is standing right now at $1.1 million and our cash balance increased by $1.6 million for the year. So, uh, despite all of the challenges that everyone went through, it was a very good fiscal year financially. So in detail, in our revenue, uh, the green items were above, uh, in the circle, which is great tuition, as I mentioned. Grants and donations were quite a bit over plan. Uh, Leanna and team did a great job, uh, calling all of the grants that they could related to COVID, totaling $273,000 that went to fund a lot of the expenses, uh, in the P and L. Guidance group received 140,000 worth of grants and there was technology grants of 179 included in that total 687 for the year. So really great, great work by everyone being able to get as much money as possible for the school. Annual giving came in ahead of plan, which is excellent by $10,000 and miscellaneous income, uh, obviously very close to plan, but still over. Food services, rental income was, rental income was on plan. Food services, student programs, athletics and transportation, all were lower than plan uh, primarily due to COVID and the school operating remotely for the majority of the year. So overall, 1% above plan, uh, about $170,000 in total. On the expense side, uh, and, and the surplus, uh, salary expense did come in net higher than plan. Again, we had lower salaries during the year. Some related to COVID even with lower substitution, food service traffic and other personnel and study pen costs. And this again was offset by the bonus that was given to the employees. Uh, no raises had been planned in the budget. So this was uh, essentially, uh, to help out with that. Payroll taxes and fringe came right in plan. Uh, professional development was lower. It's always a little bit low. Uh, this year much lower due to COVID. Instructional supplies and equipment obviously lower due to, due to being remote. Programs were, uh, shortened and also remote. Food services not being in school, the athletic costs were lower with some credits from fork kicks and obviously not utilizing the facilities. Student transportation, actually not as low as you would expect. The costs were actually higher due to spacing requirements on the buses when the schools were back in, in session as well as overall higher costs. Uh, real estate tax bill is higher this year. Facilities costs were lower. Um, again, COVID and remote learning helped, uh, but there were additional costs that were required to prepare the school for opening that were included in that number. Utilities, again, remote schooling did help to lower those costs and pretty much everything else was on the plan other than other, uh, which again, we didn't have to spend as much as anticipated. Total expenses came in $590,000 less than budget and, you know, as a result of the higher income and lower expenses, we have a surplus of 1.1 million this year or $760,000 better than budget. So again, a good results given the challenges faced by the school this year. On the balance sheet side, two key items to point out, our cash increased, as I mentioned, by 1.6 million. And the school did incur capital purchases during the year of a half a million dollars. Um, a lot of that was for the opening of the school, but also, uh, a big investment in the technology, uh, equipment for the students and the school as a whole. So good, strong position as you'll see going forward in the audit. Um, and, and that's why I want to bring up that we will have a couple of big items in September and October. Uh, Leanna is working diligently on the audited financials and the annual reports. And we will have that revised budget, which is going to include a lot of the building items that are being worked on now associated with the purchase. As, as Ellen mentioned, the P and S went through and we're revising the budget to include as much of that as, as, uh, we have available for the October meeting, I think that we are, we are planning for. So that's the summary of the financials. If anybody has any questions.
First, first, a, a comment, I believe, um, that the audited financials is planned for the September board meeting this year.
Yes, that's the goal. I don't want to.
Um, other questions, questions for Kristen? All right. Thank you. Many thanks to Leanna for getting, keeping us on track. So that was finance, uh, development. Ben.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Uh, so development committee did meet, uh, this July and, uh, we discussed the engagement we have with the outside consultant regarding, uh, the feasibility report. Um, Ellen gave us an update on where she had spoken to, uh, Betsy and, and what she'd gotten back. We discussed some other feedback that we could provide to, uh, Ellen to deliver, um, which, uh, came over favorable, uh, bet, our outside consultant looks to have a report done, uh, this month and available to, uh, present to the development committee on, uh, August 12th, which is our next development committee meeting. Uh, after that, we'll be able to deliver, uh, a more broader, deeper update in terms of, uh, here to the board. Um, and start to put an action plan against some of the recommendations and the, the opportunities that, uh, that she brings through in that report. Uh, a call out to Ellen. I don't know, since you, uh, last emailed, did you have a chance to talk to Betsy? Is there any updates you wanted to kind of provide the board in terms of your direct conversations with her?
Yeah, I actually met with her this morning, um, Ben. Uh, she had given me a draft. We went through it this morning. Uh, she took those comments, um, that, from our meeting today. And then she actually, just a little bit ago, sent me, uh, what she's recommending as a final. So I'm going to read that a little more time, send it to all of you. She'll be making her full presentation to you on the 12th.
All right. Thanks a lot, Ellen. So yeah, I think, um, that was the status that we've been waiting for this summer, which was to continue to engage with, uh, the outside consultant, get to this feasibility report. And then from that feasibility report, we'll, uh, start to work on the action plan, like I said, through, uh, the next 12 months, uh, using some of her guidance and, and some of what we'll find as Ellen's been, uh, developing the physical development plan and going through that process and us acquiring the buildings to identify, um, you know, our, our list of, of, uh, targets. And then, uh, with our breakdowns of, um, the different areas we'll, we'll target to get some of the funding. So I think, uh, that's the update so far, or up to tonight, Roger.
Yeah, I'll just, if I can jump in just for one second, one of the things that she has emphasized to me over and over again is the importance of a development committee. Not necessarily our development committee here from the board level, but a group of volunteers, a very active, enthusiastic volunteers that, um, that the development committee, the board development committee, and I will be working directly with. And so, um, it is, if you can think of any of your friends or, or, uh, other parents that you know, uh, I, we've got to put this, this group of people together. They're going to be essential to our success. And, um, and so just get your, your minds thinking about, um, who the, who these people can be. And we need to invite them to, uh, participate in this joyous work that we're going to be doing over the next two years.
All right. Thanks, Ellen.
Ben, can I give a plug for the golf tournament?
You sure can. Another plug. We need as many plugs as we want.
All the plugs, all the plugs for the golf tournament. We actually, um, we're doing well. We're up, I think we have surpassed 100 golfers potentially, which is awesome. Which is so great for our second annual tournament. Um, kudos to the committee, uh, both Krista Barton and Kristy Allison have been amazing co-chairs for this event. Um, the auction is looking awesome. People are already bidding. We're already making some really good donations on the auction so far. Um, there are going to be some items at the golf tournament for live bidding. Um, and there are the ones that are online. Um, we can still auction off, we can add other items to this auction. So if you have something and you just haven't had a chance, whether you're a parent or in the community or on the board, you want to donate something, go for it. Um, just let me know. And also we do have some room for other golfers, some singles, some pairs and probably a couple of foursongs if anybody wants to get in some good golf since, you know, July rained the entire time, pretty much August is going to be perfect to get out on the links. So, um, amamsax.org/golf to register for the tournament and then biddingowl.com slash AMSA 2021. I'm going to just double check that.
Yes.
Is that the right? Yes. All right. Perfect. Um, it's bidding owl. Just to be clear, like ooh, owl. All right. Thanks.
So Mara, if there, if someone else wanted to submit a So Mara, if someone else wanted to submit a auction item, who should they contact? And how should they contact them?
They can just reach out to me and I will get them connected to what we need to do to get it online.
Via your email address?
Oh, yes. Why don't we do my AMSA email address? Mara-webster@amsaacs.org. Or is it M Webster? I can never tell. I have too many email addresses. Who emails me? Yes, it's unlisted on this thing.
There you go. Thank you for the update. Other questions for the development committee? Education committee, Liz.
Okay, so as Zach mentioned in his update, we did discuss the music program at our last board meeting. We, I've had some discussions with Ed Harlow, who is leading the jazz band at AMSA. He was unable to attend the meeting, but fortunately, his wife Kathleen Holland was able to step in and join the meeting. And I did tell her that we will continue to utilize her as a resource when it comes to music during this upcoming year. She is a music professor at Berkeley and has just very impressive understanding and knowledge of the importance of music. So I don't think that that is lost on anyone, you know, at the school or at the committee. I think that really what we were discussing is how, you know, we would balance the music with all of the other requirements that we have here at AMSA. Just so everyone is aware, there will be a survey going out to the entire AMSA community. Probably in the August timeframe, we didn't think it would make sense to send it out too early because people might not be looking for things over the summer. But as, you know, as we get into the later August timeframe, when people will be starting to receive communications from the school, that would make the most sense. So really, just trying to gauge the interest level of students in terms of being involved in a music program. So that's really what it's all about. Obviously, I think that that's really the starting point for any discussions around a future music program. And I think that one of the things that we discussed at the education committee and we really need to think about is, you know, how would we come up with sort of a five-year plan, if you will, to really consider what we could do in terms of music? And obviously, there are a lot of discussions that have to occur with the school as well. But I don't think it's just a one-and-done conversation. It's really, you know, starting to look at how do we take a longer-term perspective around, you know, what we want to do at AMSA with the music program. So that was really the focus of our July meeting, aside from some administrative, if you will. So as I mentioned, Kathleen Holland was just a phenomenal resource. And I think that, you know, she's definitely someone that we should, you know, all be discussing music with along with Ed Harlow as well. So if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. I would be happy to answer them or get them on our agenda for future meetings.
Yeah, Liz, that's great. Wonderful update. I want to let you know too that I had the grant writer who was with us last year. She's going to be with us for one more year. Talked to her about looking for grants to cover not only music, but to expand our theater program as well. You know, there's always a few considerations, right? It's financial.
Yep.
It's the cost of a teacher. It's space, right? Bands happening in the middle of math class. So there is lots to do. And I helped write a five-year plan several years ago. I can dig that up and send it over to you.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you so much, Ellen.
Yep.
Any other questions for me? Okay.
Thank you, Liz. I think we are ready for meeting wrap-up.
Right now, I have a time.
There was no items flagged for discussion. So did I miss anything there? Meeting wrap-up. Summary of action items and review of any action items from the past board meeting. I had none from the past meeting. So Sarah, did we get any action items during our meeting?
Sarah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Beats the typing. Action item for, it was a survey task force, setting up a new one in September. And then making sure everyone fills out the, completes the evaluation, the ED evaluation.
Those are, all right, so those are action items. The second one is clearly the most important. Please try to complete that so we don't, so Liz and I don't have to chase you down. It's very important to get our goals and stuff, get the evaluation done.
Yeah, I will send out an updated communication just saying that, you know, given the vacation period, we are going to extend it till the 9th, but we do need people to start getting those completed because I don't want to have to start with the bad messages.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for sending that announcement out. Look forward to the second email. Meeting effectiveness. Any thoughts? Challenges that we faced? I think we're definitely looking forward to the consent agenda. That will move things along, especially when we have multiple minutes to approve.
So what needs to happen for us to try that for the next board meeting?
I think we just need, I think what we need is ground rules for the consent agenda. So I think, Julie, you want to have further thoughts?
Should we figure that in governance? So we...
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So I look for governance to give us the guidelines for how to do a consent agenda. And hopefully, we can do it in September. All right, so I think we... Any other business that I missed? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Did you want to go over candidate agenda items?
Oh, sure. Yes, thank you. So we have agenda items for the August board meeting. Look for a governance update on the consent agenda. And from the development committee, an update on the development/fundraising. Anything else? Hearing nothing else? Look for a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
Oh, come on, I'm supposed to...
Oh, sorry, Ben. I didn't mean to steal your job.
So that was Sheila and Liz, right?
That was Mara. Mara and Ben.
Okay, we'll give it a Ben, just to be consistent.
All right.
All right, Mara and Ben. Sarah, please call the roll.
No, we don't. Okay. Bella Gorman.
Yes.
Ben Hamer.
Yes.
Jill Schaefer. Christine Carney.
Yes.
Liz Song.
Yes.
Mara Webster.
Yes.
Nick Pori.
Yes.
Raul Porres.
Yes.
Roger Jarrett.
Yes.
Helen Kelly.
That was a yes.
I heard mine wasn't working. She's nodding.
Sami.
Yes.
Zachary Aldersby.
Yes.
All set.
All right, meeting adjourns. Thank you, everybody.